Call the row.
Bushong.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Doxstra.
We have a forum.
Thank you. If you would rise for the floor to pray with me, please.
Our Father.
For our heaven.
For our life.
For our kingdom.
For our kingdom.
Honor of the citizens of him.
Give us a stay of labor grade.
For your trust in us.
As we forgive those who trust in us.
Use this temptation like deliverance from evil.
For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever.
Amen.
If you want to practice with intention, position, wait.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the very blood of which it stands.
One nation, united, united we stand.
In the name of the God, the Lord, and the justice of our law.
If you see it. Commissioner Shaw has requested that item D be pulled from the consent agenda.
Mayor, clarification, item one I.
I'm sorry. Item I. Other than that, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. It was moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Rutherford, to adopt the consent agenda. Call a question? Motion carries five, six to zero.
Excuse me just a minute. Joe, since I wasn't here last week, should I abstain on the minutes and stuff, or does it matter?
It's not inappropriate either way.
Okay.
Commissioner Shaw, you wanted to discuss the item on the hospital authority.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. When I reviewed this document, I noticed that the Avedis Foundation had made a recommendation of three individuals to be placed upon the Shawnee Hospital Authority. And I certainly recognize the merit and the need to place the, on our hospital authority board, individuals who have experience and qualifications. I am not challenging anyone's, anyone's appointment on this. What I am at, would like to see changed is just the fact that I believe that we have an application process, that we have asked all of the other individuals in the city of Shawnee to complete and fill out and forward, and then for us to pass those nominations. I would like to suggest at this point in time that we table the three hospital authority appointments, reappointments, until such time as we receive these forms into the office of the city clerk.
Counselor, do you have an opinion on this issue?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Commissioner Shaw alerted me before the meeting that she was going to have this question. I've been attempting to ascertain a good answer, and quite frankly, in this short timeframe, I don't have, I don't have one. I don't see anything on first blush that, that requires there be an application process. However, that has been the practice of the city for some time, at least as long as I'm aware. And so, I see nothing in here that would prohibit moving forward with this item, but at the same time, I do think that Commissioner Shaw's recitation of past practice is correct.
We have a motion on the floor to table the hospital authority appointments. Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
I move we adopt item I on the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we affirm the reappointments to the hospital authority of Mike Warwick, John Robinson, and Chuck Skillings, and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to again bring out the fact that if we're going to continue this type of practice, then that anyone who has an interest in serving on these boards, just get a organization to recommend you. Thank you.
I think if, with these particular people, it's so clear that they're ultimately proper for that position, I think in times, in many cases, you might be, certainly true. If there were any question at all about what we, how we know about these people, what they're capable of, and how their knowledge base, I think it's not necessary in this case.
Again, we have a set practice, and I'd like to take issue with your statement. Thank you.
What, what does the hospital authority do these days? We have some people in the audience that might be able to answer that. Mike, do you know the answer to that?
Mike Adcock, I'm on that authority, and we're basically meet once a year to nominate officers and directors. It's, it's very inactive. The, the hospital, it's, it was a kind of conjunct to the hospital, and it's, it doesn't function.
Is there any reason to keep it alive?
Yeah, I can't remember what that reason is, but there's a reason to keep it alive.
That was my question. Thank, thank you, Mike. Sorry to pull you out of the audience.
Call for a question.
Motion carries five yes, one no. Item two, citizens' participation. We have a three-minute limit per person, and a 12-minute limit per topic. If you'd like to partake in citizens' participation, then come forward to the podium, tell us who you are, and sign in, and have at it.
My name is Douglas Gordon. I'm a co-owner of a new art gallery and studio on Main Street, Studio 112 and 1/2. I'd like to say we really like the improvements to the sidewalk, and we look forward to the Main Street being open. At the moment, our gallery is for emerging artists and established artists, and we're bringing ones in from Oklahoma City, Norman, established, showing with the emerging, and we're hoping time is going to increase the sales tax revenue in Shawnee as people come in, buy art. They can come in, even just sit down, create, create art, relax. I'd like to invite you all to come out and have a look at it sometime. We've got some really good artists in November and January, an unframed art show with Jason Wilson from the Paseos could be showing, as well as some emerging artists. And in February, we have a call-out nationwide for artists to create work, 2D or 3D work, based in opera, because we have an opera singer. It's opera and art, so I hope the city of Shawnee will support it. We're out there to bring people in to Shawnee, because there's a lot of good artists here. And I'm the artist curator. This is the curator supervisor.
I'm the supervisor. There we go.
East Maine or?
It is. 112 and 1/2, East Maine. We just got new, new sidewalks poured. We're really excited. Things are moving right along. It's really good to see people downtown walking. This weekend is Buwan Bell, and we're expecting some really great participants and some good visitors from out of town, so we're welcoming them to our awesome downtown, and we're looking forward to seeing what downtown Shawnee has next.
Yeah, even with the sidewalks not being open last week, we still had people finding their way in the back way. Three artists came in last Wednesday, just start, sat down, started creating art. We look forward to improvements.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Item three, discussion, consideration, possible action on Clara and Juan Guerrero's appeal of an administrative order requiring the demolition of the residential structure located at 420 South Park Street. Justice.
All right. Good evening. The applicants here actually pulled a remodel permit, so no need to take any action. This will actually go through a six-month process, and it's a good thing, get it, get a rebuild. Thank you.
We need to make the motion to table that, or something, or just walk on?
Staff's not recommending any action, so you guys can move on with no action.
Item four, consideration of final plat, for replat of Vision Edition Section 1 located at 4301 North Harrison Street. Applicant is Vision Bank.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. If it suits the commission, I'd actually like to present both agenda item four and five, being case S-1816 and S-1016 together. They relate together, they're on the same piece of property, so it might be easiest to do that.
Any objection? Proceed.
All right, great. So the subject property here is actually located on the northeast corner of 42nd Street and Harrison. Both cases that we're looking at today are really in an attempt to plat a piece of property that was once floodplain, but a concrete channel has been put in that place. The land's been, the floodplain has really been shrunk down to that, that channel at this point. So the first piece of property here, Section 1 replat of the final plat, is about three acres in size. It currently has Vision Bank on it and in stock now. There was an addition of about an acre there, along with our second plat, really just to make sure the property's linked together properly. Not, not much really to say on the first one. The standards of the plat itself look great. The second property is directly to the east, and the preliminary plat for Vision Edition Section 2 was approved earlier this year, and really had two buildable lots and two outlots. What we're approving today is actually one of those buildable lots and the two outlots. And those both, both of those outlots actually house the concrete channel. So really, staff recommends approval on both of these cases. There's four conditions linked to both of them, the major one being an official letter of map revision received from FEMA stating that this channel is in fact going to contain the flood, the flood area and stormwater drainage. So again, with that being said, I do recommend approval on both of these, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are you waiting on the FEMA letter?
We have actually just received it today, so we're in, in the process of reviewing that.
Is there any further discussion?
Since you're in review of the FEMA letter, does it indicate any concerns at this point in time that we need to be aware of?
We don't anticipate any, any problems, and there's been communication between the city and FEMA throughout this process, so no, we don't expect any, any problems.
So we're approving it in lieu of, of course, the conditions being met naturally.
That's correct.
Is that standard?
It's very standard, yes.
Had the letter not been received, is it normal to approve it pending the receipt of the letter?
It is, because we, we have several mechanisms to stop any progress from that point. We don't accept the improvements. The building never gets built until we receive that, so we do that pretty, it's pretty customary to do that with our, with our final plats, to place conditions upon those.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I move we adopt the final plat on S-1816 and S, what is that, 1016, with the condition described by staff.
Vice Mayor Harris, we'll need to do those in separate motions after the next agenda items.
Okay. Well, I do not move on the 1816, for first of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bushong. Call a question? Motion carries six oh.
I move we adopt the, is that item five, final plat for Section 2 of?
Yes.
With the four conditions, S-10-16.
Second. Been moved by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Bushong. Call a question? Motion carries six oh. Item six, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 1500 East Independent Street from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial, case PO8-16.
Once again, I would like to accomplish both item six and item seven together, as it's a rezone and a preliminary plat on the exact same piece of property.
Any objection? Proceed.
All right, thank you. The subject property is on the northeast corner of Independent Street in Elm. It is roughly 12 acres in size, and their quest is to rezone from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Neighborhood Offices. What is proposed on this site is roughly a 7,000 square foot commercial office for the Avedis Foundation. It will be located central on the site with a, really a central drive, and the only means of access would be Independent Street. We've had issues in the past on this specific site, most of which related to any access upon Elm Street, as it's, it's quite small really, and on-street parking and those sort of issues tended to come up. The limitations that we really do find on, on this 12 acres, if we do approve it, is that commercial access can only be on an arterial, on arterial street, where Elm Street's a local road, so access can't be there. In fact, no more lots can be platted along Elm Street as is. So with the one, the one means of access, and really the centralized office on this site, and the, the intent really to keep an abundance of the trees to the north, to the east, to provide an environmental buffer, it's, it's quite a great project really for this site. Unlike ones we might have seen in the past, it's a much lower density development. In the past, we've seen requests up to 50 dwelling units, ranging from single-family to duplexes, or even triplexes for that matter. But again, after staff has looked at this case, both for the rezone and the preliminary plat, we find that it does conform with the zoning code, the subdivision regulations, and the Shawnee Comprehensive Plan. So with that being said, for the rezone, there are no conditions. Staff does recommend approval. And for the preliminary plat, there are four conditions, but a recommendation of approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This is my neighborhood. This is the individuals that have come to me many times over in regard to this property and in regard to that zoning concern. I have shared that concern, and I've been distressed over this particular zoning, the change that was previously indicated here. At this point in time, my neighbors have indicated, or at least a large percentage of them, that they, they no longer challenge this, that they support this issue, that they believe the Avedis Foundation will be a, a good move, and that they'll consider all of the ecological, environmental, and traffic concerns and needs that were expressed. There is a concern by Mr. Harris. He is concerned over the rezoning of the property, and he does still believe that it would negatively affect the property value, the traffic flow along the narrow Elm Avenue. And I share that concern with him, and I hope that the Avedis Foundation and that the planning commission will look to that issue. The increased flooding in the area of 1800 North Elm Avenue, I don't know if that's been addressed, but I hope that you have considered that in the four conditions. And based on this, I am strongly in favor of this zoning change.
You have a motion?
All of that, yes, I make a motion.
Is that a motion as to item six?
Well, it's a public hearing, so.
Oh, okay.
Staff's presented.
Item, okay, I'm sorry. Anybody's for it, or anybody's against it?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no more discussion from staff, if you'd open the public hearing.
Public hearing is now open.
Might ask anybody to pause or record or whatever. I'm Mike Adcock, and I'm the Chair of the Avedis Foundation. I'm certainly for this, and Michelle will certainly take into consideration what you said. We've dealt, Michelle has done a lot of work with the neighbors, and we intend to keep that as much of a park as we can. We have our engineer from ADG is here to answer any technical questions, so I was here to kind of take bullets for Michelle.
Could he address the issue of the flooding in that area? And how that?
Hi, Jason Cotton, ADG. I'm Project Manager for this project. To answer your question specifically, city of Shawnee has a drainage ordinance that any new project would need to follow, and so there's a provision in the preliminary plat you might see in the site plan that we've proposed a stormwater detention facility. So that's proposed on the north side of the site, and that will control any flooding that might come from the site. Basically attenuate stormwater flow so that it, it basically matches existing conditions as the site sits today.
And would that, his concern is that it would flood into the, the Elm Avenue area. Is any of your changes going to help offset that runoff?
No, the, the stormwater detention, for the most, for the most part, the site drains kind of to the north through that existing channel and off into the, across the north property line.
Okay.
And so we're not proposing to change anything about that with the construction of the project.
Justin, was there a, a need that was actually presented in that area?
When we look at the, the stormwater drainage that's proposed right now, the preliminary plat phase, those answers may not be there as much, but when we move on to final plat, and actually move towards recording the final plat, what we, what we expect are drainage calculations and flows that show that it doesn't in fact go directly into the neighbor's yard, but do actually flow into the stormwater detention pond.
So the next level, when we do the final plat, we'll address those issues, is what I'm hearing you say.
That's correct.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Public hearing is closed. There is a motion on the floor as to rezoning. Is there a second?
I'll take it.
Motion by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bear with me.
Good gracious.
An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described real property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit. Attractive land described as beginning 660 feet, north 89 degrees, 43 minutes, 27 seconds east of the southwest corner of the southeast quarter of Section 8, Township 10 north, range 4 east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma. Then's north 0 degrees, 16 minutes, 33 seconds west, a distance of 1,314.5 feet to a point on the north line of the south half of the southeast quarter. Then's north 89 degrees, 19 minutes, 27 seconds east, a distance 397.66 feet. Then's south 0 degrees, 16 minutes, 33 seconds east, a distance of 1,314.5 feet. Then's south 89 degrees, 43 minutes, 27 seconds west, a distance of 397.66 feet to the point of beginning, to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma. According to the recorded plat thereof, rezoning said property from R1 Single Family Residential District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Call a question. Thank you. Motion carries six oh. Item seven, consideration of the preliminary plat.
This is one that had, Justin has the four conditions on it.
Yes.
I move we adopt the preliminary plat with the four conditions recommended by staff.
Seconded. Been moved by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question? Motion carries six oh. Item number eight, sales tax report for October of 2016.
I'm only in the messenger.
Don't shoot the messenger.
I'm not going to go page by page too much on this. I just, I always have a hard time with this stuff. Okay, there we go. October sales tax collected this month was $1,496,000, and this is just a chart to show how it's divided among the funds. The general fund obviously receives two pennies, so they're getting $997,000 capital improvement, street fund. Compared to last year, we're down about $48,000, but I talked to the state this morning, and the whole state is down again, so we're holding our own. I mean, it's not exactly what I would like to see, but we're holding our own. These are the retail trades. I know these are kind of small on the screen, I apologize. These are the top categories we have, the retail trades, accommodation, and this is just, this page is just giving you a total of what we've collected this year so far. So we've collected about $4.5 million. This is comparison of last year, and we collected about a little over $4.6 million. And this is a comparison. Where we're down in classified, that varies. That could be new permits. I mean, that's down a lot. But actually, we are down a little over $100,000 so far this year in sales tax. These are our top revenues, and I apologize, from last year is, this is this year's, I'm sorry. Overall, compared to last year, we're, we're about even. Sales tax is down a little bit, the use tax is up, the alcohol beverage tax is up, and the court fines are up. But franchise fees, the cable, I'm not exactly sure. I need to call them. I think they missed a month. We got one today, and I need to call them and remind them that they've missed a month of September.
Thank you.
So, that's just a little, this is a little bit on SMA. We're down about $40,000 for the, I included the billing for October 3rd for this year's comparison, because last year it was done on September 28th, which Zone 3 is one of our largest zones, so share apples to apples, I threw it back. Just a little bit, general fund, we've collected a little over $5 million, we've expensed 4.9. SMA, we've collected 2.8 and expensed 2.3, which is pretty much on target until you start about doing some of the big projects. And this is just a little tibet. So far in the three months, we've done 1,047 purchase orders, we processed approximately 2,400 payroll checks and direct deposit, we processed 3,800 invoices and wrote almost 1,700 checks.
Any questions?
If you have any questions, you can always call me.
Thank you, Cindy. Is there any new business?
No, Mayor, there's none.
Anybody else have any new business? Commissioners comments?
A few weeks ago, I had indicated that I'd like to recommend that we look at our charter, and I still would like to make that recommendation, and I've sent over a email to Justin and to Joe in regard to looking at our awards and our boundaries. This is something that's been done, it's my understanding, about every couple of years, they look at the numbers, and correct me where I'm wrong, Vice Mayor, but we look at the numbers. the numbers, and correct me where I'm wrong, Vice Mayor, but we look at the numbers that are, the number of inhabitants in each ward and try to equalize them based on the zoning areas. So, I would, again, like to have that brought before the city, so that we can visit on that issue.
Commissioner Shaw, I know Mr. Erickson has looked into getting the census data, and there are multiple charter revisions that have been requested, and I think the intention is to present all of those that are retrieved.
Great.
Any other comment?
Yeah, I would kind of like to mention, certainly about Avedis, for instance, and certainly proud to have them finding a home finally here and settling down here. We have so many marvelous things that have happened in the city in the past, and I'm looking at one of the best of all of them, perhaps, as far as the effect on our population, certainly health-wise, and actually from almost every standard of life itself, as far as personal feelings about themselves. It's an entire program that starts very low down, very close to the ground, and works its way all the way up. And I'm terribly enthused about what the possibilities that will be as that comes forward.
Mayor, I would like to add a couple of things.
Go ahead.
Avedis Foundation, we're very excited about having you near us. We look forward to what you're going to do and how you're going to do it. We believe that you've advanced a lot of good opportunities here in the City of Shawnee, and thank you, thank you. On another note, I'd like to invite all of the City Commission and the Mayor out to our FAST Act tribal negotiation with the Department of Transportation. It's a historic meeting. It's going to be held out at the Grand, and it starts tomorrow, and they will be here for three days. We're going to have people from the highway, from aviation, from all areas of the Department of Transportation here at the highest level. Thank you.
Any other comments? This meeting stands in recess, and I call to order meeting of the Shawnee Airport Authority. Item number one, consider approval of the consent agenda. Would you consider a motion?
So moved, seconded.
Who was that? Sean Bouchon, seconded by Darren Rutherford.
I'll vote for it, but since I wasn't here, I wasn't on it.
Call the question. Motion carries six zero. Item number two, is there any new business?
No new business.
Meeting is adjourned. Call to order the meeting of the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Item number one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum, seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Call the question. Motion carries six oh. Consider bids, sanitary sewer rehab, various locations. Item number two. Thanks.
I got several bids, huh?
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. Tonight, what I've got before you is the bid opening of the annual sanitary sewer rehab project. The first bid was from IPR South Central in Houston, Texas, for $998,662.80. Second bidder was Horseshoe Construction out of La Porte, Texas, for $1,089,137. Third bidder was Jordan Contractors out of Tecumseh, Oklahoma, for $1,298,420.50. And the fourth bidder was Urban Contractors out of Oklahoma City for $2,44,737. I would like to defer these, the bid award, to the November 7th Commission meeting to give staff time to tabulate these bids and come back with the recommendations.
Seconded.
Been moved and by Commissioner Harris and seconded by Commissioner Gillum to defer the awarding of the bid to the next meeting. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries six oh. Water treatment plant sludge removal.
Once again, we have a bid opening. This is for a different project. The first bidder is Denali Water Solutions out of Russellville, Arkansas. Their bid was an amount of $184,744. Second bidder was Hodges Farms and Dredging out of La Beaux, Texas, or, excuse me, La Beaux, Kansas, $323,000. And the third bidder was Tonto Environmental out of Muskogee, Oklahoma, $364,000. And I'd like to defer this award till the next Commission meeting also.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum to defer action.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Harris. Call the question. Motion carries six oh. Is there any new business?
No new business.
This meeting is adjourned. We reconvene the City Commission. Item 11, discussion, consideration, and possible action to enter into executive session to discuss confidential communications between the city and the city attorney concerning a pending claim and investigation, which the city, with the advice of the city attorney, has determined that disclosure would seriously impair the ability of the city to process the claim and conduct an investigation in the public interest and compliance with its duty of confidentiality concerning investigation of complaints of the existence of a hostile work environment as authorized by 25OS Section 307B4.
So moved, we join the executive session.
Been moved by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Call the question. Motion carries six oh.
Where we going? Make Justin's office.
the executive session regarding confidential communications between city and city attorney concerning a pending claim and investigation, which the city, with the advice of the city attorney, has determined that disclosure would seriously impair the ability of the city to process the claim and conduct an investigation in the public interest and compliance with its duty of confidentiality concerning investigation of complaints of the existence of a hostile work environment as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statute, Section 307B4.
Okay, I move that we authorize the city manager and city attorney to hire qualified independent third party to conduct the investigation into pending claim, which the city, with the advice of the city attorney, has determined that disclosure would seriously impair the ability of the city to process the claim and conduct an investigation in the public interest in compliance with this duty of confidentiality concerning investigation of complaints of the existing hostile work environment as authorized by 25OS Section 307B4.
I'll second.
Been moved by Harris and seconded by Rutherford. Call the question.
I'd like to say I'm very concerned and conflicted over this, and that the approach that we're taking, I believe that I understand the reason, but not the approach. I'm going to abstain.
Motion carries six oh. We are adjourned.
Adjourned.